Alright, so we do have a full board this evening. So you are welcome to join in all the conversations, but our alternate will not have a vote. So it is seven o'clock and I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is the Tuesday, November 19th, 2024, meeting of the zoning board. And before we begin, we will stand and face the flag. Anybody wearing a hat, please remove it?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. We'll start with introductions from him.
Romeo Diney.
Terry Bonzer.
Teresa Bascom.
Bonnie Winona McKee.
Kathy Mayo.
Kevin Bassett.
Alright, we have just one case on the docket tonight, which we will start with shortly. I'm going to ask that we, Mr. Berry will come forward and present the case. We'll go through the five criteria. When I open the public hearing, you need to step forward, have a seat at the table, and announce your name and address, please, and be seated while you're doing that because it's very important that we get the recordings, because we have someone outside who is doing our minutes and we need to have a clear recording. And if you haven't already signed in, please do sign in, and it's especially important if you plan to come and speak, but regardless, we need to know if you were here. And please make your entry legible. Alright, the first case and only case tonight is 24-016 VA Earnstoff, I hope I pronounced that right, 35 Deerfield Road. The application from Berry Surveying and Engineering on behalf of Michael and Donna Earnstoff requesting a variance from Article 2, Section C2C of the Nottingham zoning ordinance. This variance request is to permit a lot to utilize an existing driveway for access that is located on frontage that is not its dedicated minimum of 200 feet of contiguous footage. The property is located at 35 Deerfield Road in Nottingham and is identified as tax map 53, Lot number 6-2. Hello?
Meeting chair, members of the board, my name is Christopher Berry. I'm with Berry Surveying and Engineering, representing Mr. Mrs. Earnstoff for this evening. The, and the property, as the chair ran to the record, is located at 35 Deerfield Road, and is tax map 53, Lot 6-2. I've pointed many of the things I've, I'll point out to you tonight in our writings, but I think it's important to understand at its basic core what we're here asking for. And I'll occasionally get up and refer to the plans so that I can make these things a little bit clearer for everybody. We're proposing a four-lot frontage, or a four-lot subdivision off from a private road to gain access to the buildable upland adjacent to, and sort of towards the middle of the parcel. The parcel is 110 acres in size. And what I've put in our narrative is a series of events that have taken place over the years on this parcel to get it to its current sort of shape, size, and frontage that exists on site. The reason we're here tonight has really limited, reason, the reason is limited to the specific circumstance of this parcel and not necessarily the fact that we're subdividing. And so I point that out, I'm sure many people in the room are interested in discussing the subdivision and what things will look like and impacts that that subdivision might have, but we're here tonight to discuss a variance to allow for the remaining approximately 93 acres of land to be accessed through the existing driveway that it accesses now or has access from now. So that's located here next to or across the first 50 feet that I point out in our writings. If I stand here, can the mic pick me up?
No.
Do I carry the mic?
Sure, I think.
Sure, why not?
I don't know. You don't have a whole lot of-
You can move your drawer over if you want.
Yeah.
Just put it on that.
Okay.
I'll move the drawer, yeah.
Yeah.
Move the easel closer to you.
Yeah, you'll be good there.
So, the narrative discusses a few different subdivisions and lot line divisions that the former family owned, or Colby, who owned the parcel, conducted. And those subdivisions and lot line divisions are included in the back of our application package. So when I say things like "the planning board approved," I'm referring to applications that took place in the 70s, 80s, and 90s, and then most recently in the early to mid 2000s. All of that is to say that the existing configuration of this parcel includes these two frontages, a 50-foot frontage here, and then the remainder of the frontage is here. And what we're proposing is essentially a small subdivision, but by subdividing this, in our opinion, we're sort of changing the makeup of the frontage, we're creating what some might consider a new lot, and therefore, we're requesting a variance to allow this remaining 93 acres to have driveway access over the existing driveway that goes into the parcel now. The alternative to this design would require that we place a new driveway through the frontage, the 200 feet or so, that's along Deerfield Road, into the parcel, and that would require that we cross a minimum of one, I mean, it's actually two wetlands, so it's system of two different crossings. It would place driveway development closer to certainly this abutting landowner, and would have-
Can I stop you for a second?
Yes, sir.
Could you identify which maps you're looking at, because we have two here. One of them is a topography that shows elevations and the other one is not, so-
So the first one is the subdivision plan that just shows meets and bounds and bearings and distances and things. The second page shows the topography. So currently, we're looking at just the-
So we're just on the first page?
We're just on the first page.
Thank you, I apologize, just go ahead.
So, on the second page, you can more clearly see that the front of this parcel contains a wetland system that comes down and branches, and if we were to not utilize or be permitted to utilize an existing driveway into the site, then we would have to essentially design and construct a driveway, or at least permit a driveway into the remaining acreage. And in our opinion, I think using the existing driveway into the site makes more sense from a planning standpoint, it makes more sense from a disturbance standpoint, but for the fact that the ordinance requires that your driveway come across your frontage, and because we are now subdividing the rest of the property, this now becomes the frontage, I think using this existing driveway into the site makes the most sense. Currently has utilities that run down it, provide access to utilities to abutting landowner. It's a pretty well-built road, doesn't require much in the way of additional upgrades for use as a driveway to the site. The access would not require any additional wetland permitting or other crossings, and wouldn't have additional impact to the additional frontage. This design that we proposed is generated, just to give you a bit of design history on the site, there's enough frontage here for three frontage lots essentially, and by doing that and going with three driveways, we determined that essentially, if we were to go with one private roadway, the amount of impact could be reduced, the amount of development would be pushed further from Deerfield Road, the level and just sheer amount of driveway infrastructure, roadway infrastructure would be substantially reduced. And so though this isn't an open space subdivision, it has a lot of the characteristics of an open space design, so that it doesn't have multiple driveway cuts along Deerfield Road, it doesn't have multiple wetland crossings, and other reductions in total impact on the So it's okay with share, I'll go through the narrative, I just don't leave more detail. So we point out that, again, the parcel is 110 acres or so, we conducted a full boundary survey on the parcel, a full existing conditions plan on the parcel, we've had a wetland scientist delineate the entire site, we've field located all of those wetland areas, a road pool analysis was conducted, and will be submitted to the planning board for their review and discussion. There are two frontages on the parcel, one is large and is contiguous, and the second is the 50-foot plus or minus frontage that we've talked about on the westerly side of the property. That contains the access point. A little bit of history, the former owners actually had on the recorded plan, they're called a small cul-de-sac that was never built, and it was an additional lot that was off from the backside of that cul-de-sac, and then this Lot 6-2 was actually a slightly different configuration. When the Earnstoffs purchased the property, all of that was merged sort of into one parcel. And that's why we ended up with the configuration that we have today. In the current design configuration, we are proposing four residential lots off the private road, the fifth would be the 93 acres that remain, and the 200 feet of frontage is to the eastern side of the, eastern side of the lot, and then the other access on the western side of the lot. Do you want to hear from the public, or would you like me to go through the five special criteria first?
Go through the five criteria first, please.
So the first criteria is great to the variance would not be contrary to public interest, and we say that the public interest here is in providing an orderly subdivision and development method that does not create odd or contrived situations that deter from the delineation and clear lines of ownership and responsibility. In this case, the area proposed to be used as a driveway access is over land that the owners have as legal frontage, but simply does not meet the definition of contiguous frontage. So we're saying that we have frontage on a roadway, but because your regulations require 200 feet of frontage and that's where your access shall be, that's why we're here in the room tonight. There's already a clear ownership of frontage at this access point, and all of which provides the residents with clear ownership of the land. There's no detriment to health, safety, or welfare of others to the use of the existing driveway to gain access to 93 acres, whereas it has always been intended for this use since 1976, and there will be no substantial change of this use moving forward. If the variance were granted, the spirit of the ordinance-
Good idea.
If the variance were granted, the spirit of the ordinance would be observed, because if the variance were granted, the spirit is observed by allowing a reasonable use of the remaining 93 acres of land without creating further impact to the land. The proposed development scheme proposes one access into the property to develop four lots, which limits the environmental impact, and I would just point out currently, with this design, we don't believe we have a large environmental impact, we don't believe that we require a wetland permit, we won't require an alteration terrain permit. It is quite literally the least impacting alternative to develop this particular site. The proposed access to the remaining 93 acres of land is over the existing driveway in the site, and it is within the spirit of the ordinance to reduce impacts to sensitive areas and reduce overall impact on the land. By utilizing the existing driveway on site and not installing another, there's a large reduction in potential wetland impact. Since the proposal is the least impacting alternative to the neighborhood, it is not impacted in a marked way, and that's one of the tests for the variance, whether or not the neighborhood is impacted by us using our existing driveway into our existing 110 acres. The site can reasonably be developed with the proposed buffers to abutting landowners and Deerfield Road, and that will remain intact. The third test is great to the variance, we do substantial justice because the substantial justice test is a weight of whether or not the gain to the applicant outweighs any detriment to abutting landowners. In this particular case, substantial justice is achieved by allowing the existing driveway to remain as the primary entrance into the remaining land without the need to install a new access through the wetlands. The gain to the applicant is by reducing the overall impact far outweighs any benefit of not allowing the use of the existing driveway. There's no detriment to the abutting landowners, whereas it proposes the least impacting alternative. And I point out multiple times that if the variance were denied and we were required to install our own driveway, or new driveway into the site, that it would create wetland impact, it would disturb the land, pre-clearing, et cetera, closer to abutting landowners than this does now. If the variance were granted, the values of the surrounding properties would not be diminished. Essentially, what we're saying here is that there's no diminution of property values, whereas this is an existing use, somebody actually could use this driveway for an existing home today, and so there's no overburdening, there's no overdevelopment, and in fact, I think under 110 acres of Nottingham, this is a fairly benign project as it relates to multi and intensive unnecessary hardship. There are multiple tests here. No fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application that this provision is proposed on. As I've pointed out here tonight, we're not here creating this situation, we're here asking for permission to use the existing situation moving forward. So we're not here, and those instances were created by public bodies and approved by the town of Nottingham in its current condition, and I consider those special conditions of this particular piece of property. If we were here asking for a large subdivision of a large roadway that required access to a lot not over its frontage for some overdevelopment reason, then I would consider that not special condition of the land, whereas that's something that's being created as part of that project site. In this particular case, the special condition of the land is its configuration and its frontage configuration that we have today to work with. Another special condition of the land has to do with the fact that that driveway exists, and we're just simply asking you to use it. And then additionally, other special conditions of the land have to do with the wetlands and topographic features that exist along Deerfield Road that we're trying to avoid. So we say that the proposal is logical in its approach, it creates a harmonious subdivision with the use of the existing driveway, and if that were denied, it would create an unnecessary hardship to the applicant, whereas they would have to endeavor to construct a new driveway with the impacts that I've described above. The proposed use is reasonable in that it promotes buffering to existing and abutting landowners and reduces the total project impact. The residential use is proposed is not inconsistent for the abutting landowners, and we're looking to create a subdivision that complies with the rest of the town zoning ordinance as well as subdivision regulations. As a safeguard, I had answered question B, it is unreasonable to think that the landowner with multiple frontages, which were created by the Permissional Planning Board with the improvements made pursuant to those approvals, could not then use those improvements for access to the property for the same intended purpose based on the minimum frontage definition. This is highly specific and unique to this property, therefore, it makes it special when considering this case. It is unreasonable to expect, based on the definition of the minimum frontage, that a landowner is to be forced to cause additional visual and environmental impact to the land for the purposes of installing a driveway which it already contains. This is a hardship and is unnecessary if the continued use of the existing driveway is permitted. Do you have any questions?
Alright, anybody have any questions?
I have, I have a couple.
Go ahead, Terry.
So, you're not in for any kind of variance on the subdivision, it's just on this 93-acre piece, right?
That's right.
So how much frontage, where the private road is, how much frontage is it between there and the other lot, that lot? How much frontage is, like 600 feet or more?
Uh, yeah, that's a good estimate, I could scale it if you'd like.
Okay, no, no, I'm just trying to read, it's hard to see the little figure.
I know, I have to add it up.
Right, so you're just asking for variance because you have the frontage, but you don't, you want to use that driveway to access it, not go through that, so that's, that's the whole thing?
That's right.
Okay, so it has nothing to do with the subdivision?
Not.
Okay.
But this, in my mind, this fact that we're subdividing triggers the necessity for the variance.
Right, right.
If we already just pulled a building permit, we probably would not need a variance, but because we're subdividing, it changes-
And then, the 93-acre lot right now is not going to be a buildable lot, right? It's not part of-
No, it would be, currently it is proposed as a buildable lot, yes.
Okay, but it's, so it's actually, I mean, you said a four-lot subdivision, but really that's part of it, right? So that's like a fifth lot?
That's right, and I refer to it-
Okay, yeah, you can refer to it as a four-lot, so I was confused by-
So this is the four-lot subdivision.
Okay.
This is the fifth.
That's the fifth lot, okay.
So, how is the lot currently accessed?
Through that, through that driveway.
Through the driveway, right.
That driveway, we're referring to the little dog leg.
That's right. On the sheet two, you can see there's a driveway that comes through here. So for instance, when we done test pits in this area, when we gained access, to gain access to the parcel to do the test pits, we came through that driveway, and eventually it turns into a logging landing, which is here in this flat area, and then we made our way out to this area.
Okay, because it used to be access, used to come in from where they went to the old house, right? Used to be that, that other driveway, yeah, right.
Right, we don't, that's not our driveway.
Right.
This, that, that road actually goes through the sort of front of their door yard, and then there is a break in a wall where the Colbys used to access this parcel from the front of their door yard.
Right, yeah, because there was a Christmas tree out there, yeah.
That's right, over there.
Yeah.
There is, the abutting landowners do have easement over our parcel to gain access to the back of their, their home.
Okay.
And that's built, you couldn't take a car down there now, it's a little bit wrong, but there's an access there.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions?
Just so I know, to make certain that I understand, we were starting with the dog leg driveway, if you mind, am I calling it that? And then we have a parcel for Griswold, and then a parcel, I don't see a name on it.
Agree, I didn't see one either.
That's the owner's, I think that's the owner's lot, right?
But it's okay, so we got that, kind of sticks up there?
Yep.
That's it, yeah. There's a little pie-shaped piece over there, is that another parcel that has a home on it? I'm looking at right here, this is it.
So what that is, is the abutting boundary line, is that sort of odd shape to the road. That triangle is that other access point into your parcel.
Okay, so that's not a separate parcel, it's just an access point?
That's right.
Thank you.
But that's part of the 93-acre parcel?
That's right.
And there's a pond there, right, or some-
There is, yep, there's a pond that's sort of split there.
So that piece there, though, is another parcel? Because it's not named?
Nope. This is-
That?
That is a parcel.
Of who?
That is a butter A.
A butter A?
Yeah, and A is owned by Sarah and Bruce Flatter.
How do we, I don't see where it says that it's a butter A on here.
It's over here on the, just on the bottom.
A.
Oh, good lord, that little A is supposed to tell me a butter A. Okay.
Way over there, yeah.
Thank you.
It did on purpose, just to confuse us.
Okay, yeah, because I read plans every day.
My worst fear is confusing zoning boards, so that's not me.
Alright, anybody have anything else?
Uh-
If not, I'm going to open up the-
Not right now.
-public hearing. Alright, it is 7:25, the public hearing is now opened. If, again, please make sure you have signed in, and if you have something to say for this request of the applicant, and remember now, we are discussing the driveway, we are not discussing the four-lot subdivision. You'll be able to come to a planning board meeting to talk about that. This is the driveway access, that's all we have control over, that's what the application before us is for. So if you'd like to speak for that, please come up, state your name and your address, and speak to the board. If you have something to say against this driveway access, please come forward, again, state your name and address, and address the board. Y'all are just here for fun tonight.
No.
Okay.
Matt Midken, 28 Deerfield Road. How many? Couple questions, because I don't know the answers. Discussing this driveway, this is the way I understand it, just a driveway, and it is not something that could then be turned into a road? That's my question.
Right, you mean future subdivision of-
Is this small, non-200-feet-of-frontage piece that we're discussing tonight, something that, when it's given permission as a driveway later on down the road, can turn into a road to a subdivision? Basically, if it gets approval for a driveway, can it be waited out long enough that, well, it's a driveway, now we want to bank six more houses back there? That's my question.
There's a 50-foot easement, and there's probably some definition in our zoning audience of what a road is. I could take a look.
Yeah, that's, that's, the rest of my jibber-jabbering is based on that answer.
Well, for one thing, a road would need to meet requirements to be a road as far as the structure of it and all of that to begin with. As far as future subdivisions, there is a wait period once you've completed subdivisions before you can apply to further subdivide property. I forget what it is, do you remember? I don't like to buy here. I don't remember.
Okay.
Chris may, may know.
You know, just, I know that we've got great definitions on our website of variances and some of the different terms you guys use, which were very helpful. Me using my hillbilly logic, when I see the word variance, I think of grandpa who's got three grandchildren and 500 feet of frontage and 12 acres, and he wants to give each of his grandchildren a house lot. And Billy gets 200 feet, Jimmy gets 200 feet, and Jamie only has 100. That's when I think of a variance. I don't think of a variance when we have 93 acres and 600 feet of other frontage to bang in a road or driveway. I understand there is an existing logging road there. I also understand that if you go, you pull out of that existing driveway, there's a hullock right there.
There's a what?
Hullock, hill.
Okay.
There's a big ass piece of ledge. Which, again, if you're going to put, the line of sight going down the hill towards White Street is non-existent right there. That being said, excavators are natural, they can fix all sorts of things, but it's not their property because they only have 50 feet. I think that's going to be, people think it's your piece of ledge, but, yeah, that would be a major concern for me. I've turned around there before where I forgot coffee, lunchbox, all that stuff at home. You're shaking hands with danger trying to pull back out on a Deerfield Road, hope
hoping not to get hit by that speeding car coming up the hill. Again, big difference between a driveway and it could become more of a driveway. But to me, a variance is when there's no other choice.
We're talking this driveway, not that one, right?
All right.
But whatever he finds is the, that's my answer.
It may not be in here, it might be the, the select board.
Mr. Berry might know the nature of how, why a road needs to be, I don't.
He will actually address your concern when he comes back up, so...
You want me to get that out here?
No. Are you, are you done?
Pretty yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else? There's an awful lot of you here.
I'm Brian Cassi, I've, Dwight, Dwight, my concern, or my question basically, I believe you called me the dog leg. How long does that...
You have to address us.
How long does that road or driveway go?
How far in does it go?
How far in does it go?
Do you have an answer on that, Terry?
About 213 feet, apparently.
I believe it goes in more than that.
Well, I'm looking at the map.
According to Mr. Berry, he said it went in into a logging landing, but I don't know.
I, I believe the 213 feet is to where he wants to put in that, that system or that hole, but that road continues on quite ways.
As a logging road.
As a logging road, as a road.
Well, that, that chart is much larger than, than what we have over here, and perhaps what you have. I think it says 213 feet, but I could be wrong.
Right, but that's only along that boundary line, then it continues on. He has a line drawn in there, always, Mr. Berry does, right?
Yeah, and he does say 213.
Right.
And you're, want to know how far in it goes?
How far in goes, because of, to follow up on the previous, uh, butter, what's the start, or what's to say that that next lot doesn't turn into another subdivision?
There's a lot of wetland where that driveway goes in, I mean, there's a lot of wetland.
And when we were here in March on the same lot, there was talk of conservation land on that western boundary line. I wonder what happened to that?
That was before the planning board, not before us.
Okay.
And, so, I'm sure if there's conservation land there, it's still there.
Well, he was talking of putting in conservation land.
Okay, well, that's...
Right, there was something in our letter here.
So, I was sort of wondering where that conservation land is now, is that totally gone?
I don't think it ever existed, right, it's just in current land use, right?
It was being proposed that they were going to put in the conservation land.
Again, though, that is not something that is before us this evening. We are strictly here to discuss the applicant's request to utilize that road as a driveway.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay?
Hi, Tyler Cuffin, I live at 18 Dwight Road. My property does a but, uh, the 93 acre lot. And just to echo the last gentleman's point and to clarify our point, maybe the question for you all is would approving this driveway upend the plan for that conservation land? I know you can't speak to the land, but this group body decides something that interferes with that. Because I would want to know the question, the answer to that question. And I think, at least for where I live, and I can't speak for all the neighboring properties, the four lot subdivision, it's probably more palatable knowing that there was going to be, if, you know, potentially conservation land. So, wanting to know if the driveway upends that plan before it's decided.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
Craig, 20 Dwight Road?
Oh, no, you can't speak from there. Have to sit, please.
Just so we can hear you.
It, just because it needs, it, we need a recording, so, go ahead.
Craig, 20 Dwight Road? And I was just wondering why the 33 lots approved previously weren't built already? Because he said previously that, because zone, the whole thing's going to be built upon.
There, if there, yes, there was a issue for a conservation, um, open space development. Hey, I don't have an answer for you on that.
I'm just wondering if this 50-foot driveway is a way to avoid a cost prohibitive measure to build upon the land at later points.
Okay, I don't have an answer for you on that, but I'm sure Mr. Berry will speak to that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
So, my name is Martha Drucker, and I live at 40 Deerfield Road. And I'm not for or against the proposed development, I just wanted some clarification. And unfortunately, none of us sitting back here could see any of this presentation. So, I know that...
Sorry, but the presentation is to the board.
No, I understand.
Okay.
But to answer our question, we, so one thing I wanted to get clear is the 50-foot right-of-way that's currently been, was approved in 1976, located on the eastern property line? That would be between the proposed subdivision parcel and the Gupo parcel? That's not under discussion at all tonight, is that correct?
Correct.
Something done in '76?
That's correct.
That is correct.
Okay. Because I, so just I want to put a note on the record, there was some discussion in the narratives related to that, saying how that's an existing 50-foot right-of-way that was approved and has utilities and could be used as an access to develop this property. I just wanted to go to note that there is no utility, there is no private utility company that services that back lot. It is one service to the abutter to the east. So there is no private utility that currently services any of this lot here. There's a, one lot that services the home to the east. The other thing I wanted to note is that the 50-foot existing cul-de-sac right-of-way that was approved in 1976 predated any wetland regulations that were established in 1987 by the Army Corps of Engineers. So, my assumption is that if this ever came to planning board, this whole area would have to be, you know, reevaluated, because that would have, the current survey that was done by, I believe, Dietrav Denjunin, this whole eastern side has, is pretty much bordered with wetlands, and that was, was not known at the time when this right-of-way was granted by the planning board. So that's just my information, and Mr. Berry can, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but I noticed that was used in some of the narrative to support why we would use this new entrance. So, my next question was, or clarification, is this entrance that's proposed on the western portion of the proposed property that would access the four lots, that's a, it, it's basically a current dirt road that used to be used to access the dark, the backwoods of the Holbees property, if I'm not mistaken? And it, it seems like the, the variance is to allow those lots to be developed with, with not having 200 feet of continuous frontage at that private driveway entrance to Deerfield Road, is that correct?
No.
No.
It's the other driveway.
There's, there's greater than 200 feet there.
It's like 600 feet.
Yeah, 600 feet between...
The drive, that edge of that private road down to the house.
Correct, I understand that. But the four lots that are being developed have access on a private driveway that only has 50 feet of frontage on Deerfield Road?
No, the 50-foot frontage is on the western side, the development is going to be on the eastern side. Am I correct, Chris, or Mr. Berry?
Right, so I, what I'm saying is, the zoning, the zoning ordinance says that each lot shall have continuous 200 feet of frontage on a public street.
It's a shared driveway.
Right?
It's a shared driveway.
But I think this is...
So, this is a private drive, on a road, it's a private driveway.
It's a shared driveway for all those.
It's a shared driveway for...
But that's subdivision, and that's not part of tonight's discussion?
No, but it has merit because it's the 200-foot variance, right?
We're not dealing with that tonight.
We're talking on Deerfield Road, no.
It's a...
So you're, yeah, so the access to these four lots is right here.
Correct.
Which is 80 feet on Deerfield Road. So this lot does not have 200 feet of frontage on Deerfield Road. This lot does not have 200 feet of frontage on Deerfield Road.
It doesn't have to, ma'am.
So, no, that's my question. So, why, so you're getting a variance because it does it, correct?
No, we're not, there's nothing, we're not doing anything with that. It's that other, it's the 50-foot driveway into that 93 foot, 93 acre piece.
Not the subdivision, it's the remainder piece we're looking at. And it's a driveway access on the other side.
So, the whole, this whole variance is based on that 50-foot right-of-way with the cul-de-sac?
No, it, well, it's...
No, it's bear, on this, the driveway that's, on that piece...
There's two driveways.
Right, it's on the driveway that's closest to you, yeah.
The driveway with the cul-de-sac.
And that's...
That's the one we're, that's the one we're talking about.
This is the one you're talking about right now?
Yeah, yeah.
That doesn't have continuous frontage? It does, but he doesn't want to use it.
Can I clarify something?
Yeah, do you see we're not confused?
Yeah.
Sorry.
I, I know, oop, I know this isn't a back and forth, but I don't, I want everybody to understand what we're trying to do.
You don't?
Can you, can you make sure you're talking and, or move that microphone for you, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. We've referred, this, this road, or private road, has been referred to as a driveway. It will be built to a town road standard, and will be approved by the planning board, so that this lot, this lot, this lot, this lot, all have 200 feet of frontage on that road, just like a conventional subdivision. That's why we're not here asking for variances for that, because each of those lots will have frontage on that roadway. The 93 acres has frontage here, all the way to here. Approximately 600 feet, I think is the number we're loosely using, so. Now, I could have drawn this lot to go from here all the way down and just give the 93 acres 200 feet of frontage. I didn't want a private landowner to own that parcel, because then they're going to want to fiddle with it. And I would rather ruin it and have it be left in its current state so that nobody fiddles with it, and that the access to this 93 acres come over this driveway that's there now.
And for clarification, that was approved in 1984, not '76?
Yeah, yeah, I don't know that any of that's overly relevant. I think to her point, I described through the history, there was a cul-de-sac kind of design in here like this. That's all gone away, and to alleviate others' concerns, if anybody ever wanted to use this for a roadway, that individual or their applicant would be right back before the zoning board, probably having to ask for permission to do that, or a whole host of other zoning reasons. That's not our intent, this isn't a, a gotcha, now we're going to subdivide more off of this driveway. That's not why we're here tonight. We want access to the 93 acres over a driveway. If anybody wants to do anything more than that, then they'll, at a minimum, they'll need plenty more approvals. They'll need a wetland permit, and they will likely need a zoning board approval for apples. Does that clarify?
So then my only comment to that, so I, that's not what I understood this to be at all. I thought it was the, the access that was for the, the four lots of the division. So again, that's my original point, my only comment for this existing right-of-way, whether it was done in '84 or '76, it was prior to any wetland regulation. So, um, I would have some concern about allowing a developer to get a building permit and put in an access road at this location with, without going through, or at least further looking into any wetland implications from doing that.
Okay.
So, I, I think that, you know, I, I don't think that access road would probably be permitted with the regulations we have today regarding wetland, and whether, whether or not mitigation would be required.
Okay, thank you.
Okay?
Anyone else?
I have a question.
What, Larry?
John. You are in the butter. Do you want to say something?
Sure, I haven't signed.
I hate to drag you in, but...
I'll keep mine. I'll keep mine, pretty short and sweet. John Colonel, 11 Deerfield Road, a butter on the top side. Just my opinion, it's all yours decision to make, but they have the frontage there, there's 600 feet there, they're going for a variance for 50. I don't believe it needs it.
The quickest person I've ever heard testifying.
That's simple.
Hi. Hi, Kelly O'Connor, 20 Dwight Road. I have like more like questions and just comments about that. One of my biggest concerns so far, actually, you've brought it up earlier, was if they were to build in that location to the left, that's helpful, the impact during the winter, and what part of that hill, Deerfield Road, goes down? Because I know it flattens out probably a little bit before that, which could potentially be safer than where it currently is, because where that currently is, it really does dip. I wanted to see if that was truly being taken into consideration, given as well that he had stated that they are building it up to like Town Road, or the way you call it, Town Road. So I wanted to make sure that that was being considered as well, because the impacts on those cars driving down in the winter, plowing snow, like, you're plowing snow for, yes, it's a driveway, but it's a four-house driveway.
He said it's a...
He said it's a driveway, yeah.
But I mean, we're saying shared driveway, too, so I just want to make sure that that language was consistent. And my other concern, I already kind of... Was really, it was just like the construction of that road, terrible spot, over the neighborhood, and...
And you're referring to the road, meaning the...
Uh, Deerfield Road.
But the subdivision road?
No.
Or the driveway that they're looking to put?
Where that driveway is.
Okay.
Just like thinking about like trucks coming in, there was a excavator out there for a while the other day being dropped off. It, it's just dangerous, truly. Yeah, I think that's all.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else? No? All right, before I close the public hearing, I do want to share a letter that came to me from Susan Mooney, who is on the Conservation Commission. And she mentions here that the Conservation Commission, "This small land block bound by Raymond Road, Sage Road, Flutter Street, and Deerfield Road provides connectivity between the large, highest-ranked habitat blocks identified by Fish and Game in the Wildlife Action Plan. These land blocks are Patekaway State Park, the Kennard, or Kennard, depending on how you say it, block that extends into Epping, the Mulligan Block, and the smaller block bound by Deerfield and Stevens Hill Road." The Conservation Commission... The Conservation Commission contacted the owners, Michael and Donna Ernstoff, in late December of 2019, and communication with the family, including their Donna Alana, was established in 2020. The Ernstoffs were in favor of preserving the connectivity provided by the landscape through a development design. Southeast Land Trust was also contacted. Commission members have walked the parcel with the logger and have met with Mr. Ernstoff and a relative who lives in the area. The conservation interest has not diminished, but has been heightened by housing development pressure in our area. Recently, the commission and other interested residents have been in communication with Mr. Paul Thibodeau, the agent representing the Ernstoff family. Mr. Thibodeau attended the Conservation Commission meeting on February 12, 2024, during which he shared proposed development plans. One was a build out of 32 lots. The other was an open space design containing 33 lots. At that time, he indicated that the owners were interested in placing approximately 110 acres into a conservation easement. Note, the parcel contains a total of 110 acres in its entirety. Thank you for your attention to this application. Sincerely, Susan P. Mooney, resident. And Susan lives on Flutter Street.
She lives on Flutter Street?
Mm-hmm. Yes, she does.
I thought she lived over at that...
It's Flutter.
Uh-oh.
It's Flutter, it's like the second property down on the...
With that big solar panel, when you go down there, it's almost across the street from you.
So, anyone else want to speak? All right, it is 7:51. We'll close the public hearing. And Mr. Barry, you can come back to the table and please go ahead and feel free to address the concerns.
So I think I largely addressed most of the concerns when I was at the board. This, the request here tonight is not a request for a frontage variance. It's a request to allow the driveway to the 93 acres to not be over the dedicated 200 feet of frontage. So I want to make that very clear. We're not asking for more lots. We're not asking for any additional development. We're asking that the existing driveway be able to be used for that purpose. If the board denies the application, then we would simply take new driveway access off of Deerfield Road further up. But in that 600 feet somewhere, wherever it's deemed to be the least impactful, and propose a driveway through there. The application tonight is, has a question of really whether or not it's reasonable to use the existing driveway or whether it's more reasonable to install a new driveway. And I think I've pointed out on numerous occasions that it can be done. We design things all the time. It can be permitted. It's really not the least impacting alternative to either the land, the landowner, or abutting landowners. So that's the purpose of why we're here tonight. At the designer review hearing that we held with the planning board, we did discuss the potential for the 93 acres to go into conservation easement. The landowners have not been able to secure a conservation easement through either the Conservation Commission or Southeast Land Trust as of yet. What we've decided to do is move ahead with our development. And if the 93 acres is sold into conservation, then so be it. But we don't want to, I don't want to sit here and profess that is, that that is definitely happening when I don't know for sure that it is. And so we want to set this up so that if it doesn't happen and somebody buys a 93-acre parcel to put a house on, that that's still a possibility. I think I've addressed the future development potentials of the 93 acres. I don't want to say it can't be done. It is highly unlikely that somebody would do it. And it's likely that either this board or the planning board, based on the single access point, would limit that future development potential moving forward. But again, I don't want to speculate on what happens in the future in that particular area. 33 lots was never approved on this site. I just want to make that very clear. Concept plan was presented to both the Conservation Commission and the owner about the potential of the property. The owner would like to move in this direction, which would allow for four lots to be constructed. Somebody to either buy 93 acres and, and build a home on it or it be sold for the conservation. I think as Sue points out in her letter to the board, there has been a lot of discussion about that over the past few years. And so the owners don't want to limit that moving forward, which is why we want to ensure that the access is over the existing driveway. And I think the only other point of clarity is the proposed subdivision road is a road. It is designed to be a private road, but it is not a driveway. It is not a shared driveway. It will meet the subdivision regulations as it relates to private roads in the town.
So this will be like a homeowners association, the flower, it will be plowed by the town?
That's correct.
Okay.
For now.
Yeah, let's take bold.
The last, the last private road project that we, yeah, don't start that, please. The last private road we did had notes, deed restrictions, and HOA documents that said, "You can ask, but good luck."
So it seems to me that this road access driveway is not going to be used a whole lot.
No.
If someone were to build a reason really to, to use it at this time?
Until somebody puts a house out there, there's no reason to, to use it. Somebody could use it for hunting access or some other type of access, logging access.
I mean, you were out there, how bad is the sightline? I mean, you surveyed it. What would you say?
The sightline...
Downhill.
The sight, well, this is sort of in the sack. So the sightline to the east is very open. The sightline to the west can be limited based on, based on the ledge. But I do believe that there's adequate site distance for a driveway in the town of Nottingham.
So if you...
And we would demonstrate that to the planning board by plan.
If you were going out, you would make a right-hand turn most of the time, probably? You'd be safe, I guess?
Well, when I leave, when I left this site, I did make a right-hand turn because that's, yeah, because I'd go to Flutter and then, and then that way. But that's not to say that you couldn't make a left-hand turn safely either.
I guess I have to say, I don't understand if that land is not going to be being used, why we're even looking at putting and approving a driveway.
Well, it's going to be used today...
And when there's one already there.
Right, but it doesn't have the frontage. It's supposed to be within the 200 feet frontage, right? Yeah. You have the frontage, but there's no driveway there. So if you put a driveway in that frontage, you would need no variance.
That's correct.
Right.
Teresee, so answering your question, this is much about, much to do about nothing if that road's not going to be used for anything.
Well, it would be used...
But it's going to be used for future development?
It's going to be used for access to that lot, to the 93 acres.
In its current configuration, it could be used for a single-family home access.
A driveway.
A driveway, right. And that's what we're asking for. Because if, if I were to go to the planning board without requesting this variance, the planning board's going to say to me, "How are you going to access the 93 acres?" And I would either have to demonstrate to them that I can permit a driveway off of Deerfield Road that meets 200 feet of roadway frontage and has my driveway access across the front of it, or it's from the variance. And the alternative to what we're proposing is for me to design a driveway like from here. And gain access to that one. That is impactful.
Is what?
Impactful. It doesn't come without consequence. And I...
So, but...
There's a better way, that's why we're here.
So help me understand that, see if I'm understanding this correctly. The only reason we're here at all is because there is a plan for a subdivision which takes up where there's current access? Takes away the current access from that other driveway?
Nope.
Because you said, excuse me, but I understood you to say that you have 600 feet, but because of this, you now don't have the contiguous road frontage?
Yeah, I understand your question.
Okay. I'm sorry, I'm in...
No, because it's, it's peculiar and it's, as to this gentleman's point, it's sort of semantics. But I don't want to get caught up in semantics in front of the planning board. This has nothing to do with not being impactful, so... So if I have a parcel, it's 100 acres. I have 400 feet of frontage. If I subdivide that parcel into lots, I have now changed the underlying remaining parcel.
Correct.
That underlying, the remaining parcel has to have 200 feet of frontage and it has to have a driveway over its frontage. That's the exact situation we have here.
So that it, so then what I said, it is actually correct because the reason you're here is because you're taking away the frontage for that other driveway. Because if, if you don't do the subdivision, then that driveway that is there is totally fine. It meets, it meets everything.
To augment that, why didn't you just continue that northeast to get access to the 93? Is that prohibitive also?
Why didn't I just continue this?
No, no, the subdivision road, yeah.
Yeah, it, it's not prohibitive, but it's, it adds to the impact within this area when we already have access here.
I understood.
Yeah.
But it is another option.
There is a, there is a, a third option to doing that, but it is more impactful.
I didn't know if the northeast side was getting wet or, or...
No, not, it's not wet in this area. You do get into some different topographics that we would run in point.
Actually, it would change the design of your lots.
Oh, certainly.
Oh, yeah.
Because it would cut through, one of those lots that you're doing would have to.
Yeah. So the road would either have to be lengthened or changed to a new geometry, what happened. But it's, to answer the chair's question, it's the mere fact that we are now subdividing and we're now saying that the frontage for this, because we're taking this away, sort of kicks that regulation into the blood.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
Uh, yeah. I think the question that some of the people that are here tonight are wondering is, if this, I'm going to call it a logging trail, the dogleg, I called it a while ago, this logging trail, you want that to be approved as a town driveway or as a, as a road?
Nope.
Nope.
Just a driveway.
As a driveway.
As a driveway.
I think the question is, are you going to then come in and say, down the road, not you pers, personally, but whomever? Going to say, "Well, we want to develop the rest of that land into 10 building lots, 20 building lots." Is that a potential down the road?
Uh, it is a potential. But what I'll say, and I'm not saying that at some point in the future, somebody might not try that. And it might be me, just for open clarity. We would need a variance to permit, to reduce the buffer that the town of Nottingham now has against adjacent parcels as it respects, as it relates to roadways. We would need a wetland impact of pretty good length and, and size that likely would require mitigation, as one of the neighbors pointed out. There's a whole host of other additional approvals that would be required for, for us or somebody to do that in the future. And those boards would have to then carefully look at that request. And the unfortunate thing at that, at that time is that's sort of a self-created special condition. And the board could look disfavorably at that.
The other thing, though, is no matter where he puts in the road, they can still do that. So the fact that whether or not we approve this one does not negate him using the other access road for developing them. The only way to prevent those 93 acres from being developed is for somebody to buy them up and put them in conservation. It's the only way to do it. And that's only for now, you know?
Because if we approve this or no approval, the 50-foot is still there. It's still, yeah, I mean, it doesn't go away, so, yeah.
All right, and anything? Kathy? Bonnie? Carrie?
No.
Romeo, anything else?
Okay, I, it seems like it's one or the other. And part of it, it's already there.
Yep, well, that's what he's been saying. And so I will entertain a motion if you all have had enough information. And we've already had the public hearing, so...
How new is this? Does the public need to go again or are we done?
I, I, I really don't know.
What if my question didn't get answered? I was wondering if this was a cost-prohibitive measure? That's why you wanted to move it to the 50 feet instead of the 200 and 600 feet? He never said that.
Do you want to let more public testimony?
There's a lot of you here, so...
Yeah, that's only...
No, I, you didn't, you didn't let me finish. I said, there's, there's a lot of you here and I don't want to have you go away without feeling like you've been heard. So it's not typical for this, but because there's, like I said, a lot of you, if Mr. Barry doesn't object to having somebody else come up and ask a question and the prop, I didn't understand your cost prohibitive.
I didn't.
It seems like they're just trying to take the cheapest method out.
Oh.
50-foot driveway or whatever.
But let him address it.
Is the cheapest way in.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like you to do that in front of the microphone so that everybody can hear it and it can be recorded. Thank you.
Craig, 22 Acre Road? It seems to me his, the 50-foot driveway in is the cheapest method for him to build on that lot versus if you sold the lot with 600 feet of frontage, that's all wetland, he would have to come to you guys again, to permit longer driveway for money. It seems almost unbuildable at that point.
Okay, that's, that's what your, your question is, is this the easy way out?
Is this the easy way to get a driveway in, to sell a lot for more money?
Okay.
But I think, I mean, he could design, he doesn't have to put a driveway in in that 600 feet.
He does, he does.
He can design it and it gets sold and then the person who buys the lot puts this driveway in.
Which would make the lot cheaper because then you have to come to you guys and then you have to build a longer road.
No, he wouldn't have to come to us because he's got the, he's got 600 feet of frontage there. Put a driveway in, he doesn't need any, he doesn't need any variance.
The, a development with wetlands and steep slopes and all of that is something that always goes, well, not always, but is not uncommon to have come before the planning board.
I believe it.
And having been on the planning board for a number of years, I can tell you that if the land wants, if there's people that own it and they want to develop it, they will.
Can I just ask you why you would want to change to the 50 feet then? Why you think you would?
Why is he going there as opposed to the other one?
Yeah.
My understanding is that that driveway already exists and it's the least impactful to the environment going over those wetlands, disturbing those, disturbing, having an alteration in terrain.
Yeah.
And that's the reason.
It's already being used as a logging road.
Which was one time in the past 10 years that I've been here.
But it was.
One time. One time in the past 10 years.
I, I'm not arguing that, I'm just, it was.
And it sounds like it was a driveway that already existed, but in taking away the frontage for the hopeful coming development, it's changed that 200 feet of contiguous frontage.
Yes, but we're not doing that tonight either, right?
Doing what tonight?
Talking about the other development.
The development, no.
Yes, exactly.
I'll, I'll see you at the planning board for that, I'm sure. Whenever that comes to the-
And the other thing that you said is there was no 33 locks, but on Zillow, you did say that there was, it says there's 33 locks that were done on the land, but that's just Zillow, who knows?
Thank you.
Matt, you got something else?
I didn't say that. Zillow did. I don't know who put that on Zillow.
Are you the one that wanted to come back up?
I'll text you one.
All right.
You can believe everything on Zillow.
I guess, um, so this is eight oh five. The public hearing has been reopened. Go ahead.
Uh, Richard Harmon, uh, resident Deerfield Road. So I came in a little bit late, I'm kind of confused because I, you know, obviously presentations to you, we can't see it. Um, so I'm familiar with the logging road, I'm not in a butter above and a butter, you know, one house down. Is the logging trail, what I believe is the logging trail, is this where the variance is being requested for the driveway to be at the logging trail?
Correct.
So it's adjacent to the number 39 property, the Google property?
The Griswold?
It would be adjacent to both.
It's, well, it's-
Griswold on the east side.
Okay.
Google would be to the left.
All right, I don't-
Uh, west, to the west side.
Okay.
Is that where we're asking the variance for, is the logging trail? Or is it the old road that used to be taken up to the Christmas tree plantation?
No.
No.
It's that, it's that one. It's the logging road.
Okay. Uh, so I'm curious, do you guys ever go do a site walk to see what the, in this case, the traffic conditions would be on that road?
Well, that would-
Already a very dangerous road to try to get on and off of.
As far as traffic back and forth, I mean, only if we're there do, and there's traffic.
That's a select board.
There's always traffic there.
It's a select board issue.
Well, as far as traffic numbers that go through, that's something that the planning board looks at with developments.
Well, there's constant traffic there and the problem is it's downhill, steeply downhill, and it's always speeding traffic. So to access Deerfield Road from that property, I'm on the same side of the road as that property is, it is, you gotta be really, really careful to get out onto the road. People, especially kind of where he's proposing, I think he said there's a sight line to the east, there is not. There's a curve in the road there, the Griswold property completely obliterates the sight line beyond, I'd say 100 feet. The Griswold property is on a hill up above roadway on a curve. You've got about 100 feet of visibility of the traffic coming down the hill and that would not be a good place to be having multiple extra cars coming in and out.
Okay. I think it's 25, but that, not that anybody does it. I know, but it's 25.
You have to be riding your brakes to be stated and-
Well, it's because you, as you come down that hill, it's like, I mean, it would be great for sledding down.
It's a great skateboard hill.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Kyle Smallman, Ranger Road. Question is about the access area. I understand the gentleman's been talking about keeping impact to a minimum, which we appreciate absolutely. Do you feel comfortable, because at gun sidewalk, like you said, you feel comfortable with the way that road situation is right now that to be able to use that for access and, and not have to update it, not have to do a lot of manipulation of the ground in that area?
Do I feel that-
I mean, it would be part of the process, I would imagine, you know, he says, um, you know, the road is adequate to access the way it is, logging trail, however you want to call it. You know, you, you don't think that to gain the access that he's looking for, that's not going to require any, any sort of road construction or anything like that to, to change it or update it to current specifications?
Well, the-
It's only a driveway.
I don't think that's what we-
Yeah, I hate to say it, but that's not what we're here to talk about. It's just to, whether to grant it or not grant it.
That's the planning board, just, right?
Yeah. I hate to pass the buck back to the planning commission, but that's not what we're being asked to do.
All right, thank you.
Matt, I knew you were gonna get up.
Yeah, but it takes a while getting up.
Matt Pittkin again, still Deerfield Road.
It didn't move.
Yeah, yeah, haven't moved in the last hour. Uh, I'll keep this one really simple. Uh, John Ferrell, I think, put it the best way. There's, with all respect, there's 600 and something feet and then 50. You've got 600 and something feet to get your driveway in. The 50 doesn't meet our 200-foot requirement in the town. You're obviously zoning board to look at all that stuff. I understand there's variances, I'm not a mathematician. But in this room, actually, if you learn some basic math, then 50 is only a quarter, that's not even close. So I really, like that 600 feet looked at, I understand there's going to be an impact on, on that lands and whatnot, but it also fits the rules that we've set for. Sometimes it sucks to have to follow the rules. Sometimes it's more expensive, but they are rules. It's all got.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Big mouth.
Me?
No.
No, her.
Well, I just want, before I closed it, I wanted to, all right, go ahead.
Tyler Pepin, 18-way road.
Uh-huh.
Um, I, I think it's come to light that it seems that this road, maybe not now, that it's not now planned for development, but it feels very much like this is to, to ease that path down, down the way. I think the frontage rules, if I understand, look right there to make sure that developments fit well in the community that they're in. So this is easing something, for what it sounds like to me, easing something down the line to make it easier to put up development. But I, I would say the frontage rules should apply because that's what they're, they're for, to make sure that it can fit in appropriately in the space that it has. And because it feels as though that this is setting it up for development, I, I would say apply the rules to the frontage as normal.
Okay, thank you. Going once.
This Martha Drucker, 40 Deerfield Road, I'm also a butter. I just have one question with regards to the, the zoning regulations. So if they move forward with, with the driveway as it's located today, we're here today to make sure it conforms with the current regulations we have set by the zoning board, correct?
Depends on what you mean.
Well, for example, all driveways have to be 10 feet from the property line. So is this current driveway 10 feet from the property line?
That was actually a question I was going to have for him.
So it, it seems like, I mean, this driveway's been here for, you know, this access has been here for 75 years. So if you're moving forward with a, with a variance, I would think you would have to request a variance for everything that doesn't, or that applies to your current request. So not only would it be the 200-foot, you know, non-frontage, but you also need a variance because you do not have 10 feet from the property line.
I mean, that's 50-foot wide and the driveway's 12 feet wide, 15 feet wide, so you could get the 10 feet, so.
Well, the way it reads, driveway and accesses, including any apron or curbing, shall be placed a minimum of 10 feet from any property line. So that's just for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Going once, twice, all right, it's eight 19. Closed.
We talked about a little bit further. We're not here to permit or deny anything with the land beyond the driveway. Our task tonight is just the driveway. So it's not like we're saying, go ahead and do everything you want, put 200 acres, uh, 200 units in there. That's not it. We're just talking about the driveway.
And because he is-
That's it.
That they're looking for a subdivision, you can't not allow for access to the rest of the land. So the question then becomes, is it the driveway that's kind of almost there? Or are we going to say you have to do a new one?
But you got, um, I just have one question for you. So you have the 600 feet, you could put a driveway in there. And you have some wetlands, but I mean, you, you go in that other existing driveway that you want to use. I mean, you, you have poor sight line and you have a ton of wetlands in there. You have more wetlands in there going in that way than you do going into the 600 foot. It looks like less impact there than it does over here.
Is there a question there or should I switch?
Yeah, no, I just wondered, I mean, how many feet of wetlands do you have to go through, if you, through the 600 foot, roughly? Doesn't look that wide.
We would probably have up to 5,000 square feet of wetland impact.
You'd have that much?
Yeah, and-
Because it doesn't look that wide there in one spot, but-
Yeah, but we're looking at a 200-scale plan.
Right.
And it, it'd be two crossings, so there's a, a crossing, then there's an upland island that you'd get to, and then there's another crossing.
But how much, have you ever estimated how much you would, they would need in that driveway? Down on the 50-foot driveway?
None, we, we wouldn't propose any impact there. That's an existing driveway, so if it didn't comply with the site setback now, it doesn't now, it doesn't in the future. If somebody wanted to use it as a driveway today, they could, they would-
Right, but they gotta, if they, if they're gonna go up into this, if they're gonna build their house maybe down right on the line, but if you want to use, get up into that, up into the middle of the 93 acres, you're gonna have to cross all that wetlands.
Are you referring to if somebody wants to build up here, they have to go through here?
Yeah, I mean, it's all wetlands there, right, so.
Yeah, there's a wet, there's wetlands here, I-
There's a lot, it looks like a lot of wetlands.
Yeah, but I do a lot of wetland permitting and if DPS saw that you had access here and you're asking for access here, it's unlikely they would approve that. I personally wouldn't even ask for that, because there's, there's major functions that go into a request like that. Minimization and avoidance are like the two at the top of the list.
Right.
You have minimized and you have avoided by going right through that line.
If you bought that piece, where would, where would, where would they build the house?
You could build a house here, I mean, I mean, this, this piece right here is almost five acres. You could build a house out here in the middle and, and access that.
So you could come in along there, so that's not all wetlands, the wetland doesn't run down into that piece?
No, because the driveway comes right through here already.
Okay.
This, this area of upland is, I mean, it's as big as this proposed lot is.
You say that's five acres.
Approximately. You have access to all the other upland in that area. Madam Chair, there was a question about cost, whether this is a, a cost thing. With impact comes cost. So inversely, yes, this is a cost thing. But I think as planners, we need to consider the cost, we need to consider impact, all of sort of the same equation. If we're to say to a developer that we're going to require you to have additional impact, that developer's going to turn around and want to pay for that impact, which means more development. So this isn't a threat, I'm just telling you, the linear thinking that we go through on logics like this, if we're asking for more impact, then there, there could be more development, because that impact has to be paid for somehow. I really believe that this is the least impacting alternative. If the board doesn't feel that way, then we've, we've discussed two other options that the applicant has and we can progress in that way. But I think that this is the most least impacting alternative for this piece of property.
And one other thing that I'm not clear on at this point is the setback on the driveway for the, because it looks to me like it's right on, on the lot line, which you know it's not supposed to be.
Yeah, so, um, sorry, I tried to address this a few minutes ago. So I actually looked at that, there are, there are, most of this driveway meets that 10-foot setback requirement. I can't tell you for sure that all of it does, in fact, the flare out onto the apron likely doesn't. But I don't believe that we need a variance for that, because it is an existing condition. And we're not changing that existing condition. We're asking for a variance to use this driveway not over our frontage, because we are changing our frontage condition.
Right.
Madam Chair, do you happen to know by chance, in 1984, the 200-foot frontage was in place?
I don't, Mr. Bonzer, do you happen to know when they-
The 200 goes back quite, it goes back quite a few years, so.
Yeah, I'm not, I was not on the board in the 80s at all, and I don't know when most of these ordinances came into, came into the-
If it was, obviously it was approved, if that was in play, so, just to state a fact.
Okay, thank you.
If it's, if it was true.
Anybody have anything else? If not, you have a decision to make. I hear crickets.
I can't do nothing.
I know you can't. You can speak. You have a choice to either move to approve, move to not approve, move to do a site walk if you feel like you need more information. But those are your, your three choices.
Motion to move this to the next meeting for additional consideration of case 24-016 V A Ernstoff, 235 Deerfield Road.
Which considerate, consideration regarding what? I need something-
That, an actual, how many did the site walk?
Half, I, it wasn't all clear to me.
Sunday, but I was sick actually, so I didn't.
So some, some consideration has been brought forth with regards to the use of the driveway and, and problems with traffic. Rather than just blindly approve it, I think it might be wise for us to actually walk the site and check that and then carry it forward to the next meeting.
Would a conversation with the planning board be prudent?
No. Can we do it together, even as a, a part of this meeting? Mm-hmm, so we can adjourn until date certain for a site walk, but then when do you guys want to do that? With Thanksgiving coming up, it's not going to be within the next week, which would mean then we're into December. How about the Saturday after Thanksgiving? That's the 30th, Thanksgiving's the 28th. I don't know how many people would- Who's gonna be around? Will you be around, Romeo?
Uh, excuse me, yes, I will.
You'll be around on this Saturday after Thanksgiving?
I'm pretty sure I will.
No, I won't, I won't.
Terry, you will?
No.
I would be, but that's just one, two, three, four, if that's where else.
I could go, I mean, I would go just look at it my, on my own anyways, but now that I know more of what you're looking for.
And would you be able to be there, Mr. Berry, on the 30th to- And would you be able to be there, Mr. Berry, on the thirtieth to show us the logging, go through the logging site with us and show us the, the area, the other areas of consideration?
Sure.
For, so you would be available on the thirtieth? What time on November thirtieth works for you?
That's a Saturday?
Correct.
I'd rather it be on-
Okay, like, ten, nine, ten o'clock?
That's great. I like ten.
Ten works, okay, so ten AM. We're retired.
I'd go nine-thirty.
Well, it looks like we would-
Can park in the laundry room?
We're gonna need a four-wheel drive vehicle?
No, we're just gonna park, hopefully not get hit.
Park in my driveway on the ground stream there.
Okay, first for real? For real? Okay. Right?
Of the driveway.
All right, so, did you want to modify your motion, 'cause it never got seconded anyway?
Yeah. Modify it to
Meeting on-
Include the meeting. So, the motion is to defer to the next CBA meeting. In the meantime, on the thirtieth of November at ten AM, we will meet with the petitioner to examine-
To do a site walk?
Excuse me?
To do a site walk?
Yeah, to do a site walk, okay.
All right, and then our next meeting in December.
I thought we had no meetings in December.
Is the seventeenth.
Oh, so twelve-seventeen?
Am I correct, Alana? Okay.
Just as a point of order, Madam Chair?
Hold on one second, I need to write before I forget.
Understood.
Go ahead.
When he refers to defer, could we use the word continuance?
Continue, yeah.
Yes, I'm going to continue, not defer.
It was defer, defer the vote or continuance.
So, it has been moved and seconded that we continue this meeting with a site walk on November thirtieth at ten AM at the logging site to review the driveway areas, and continue the hearing further on December seventeenth at seven PM here in this room. Any questions on that?
And the public is invited to this.
Yes.
They're invited to come.
Site walks are open to the public. It is truly a meeting or a gathering for the board members to see the property and to hear from the developer as to what we're looking, what we've been looking at, is, I'll tell you, frequently, being out there, looking at a piece, a property, and not having someone to describe, this is what I'm talking about here, this is what I'm talking about here, which, doing sitewalks on our own, that doesn't happen. So, this is actually a better opportunity for us. So, just wanted to let you know that. Any further discussion on that? Seeing done, we shall proceed to vote, all those in favor of the motion to have a site walk on November thirtieth and then continue this hearing on December seventeenth, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And that carried unanimously, five, zero, zero. You're welcome. Okay, so you all are on notice, we will not send you anything more through the mail. We're doing the site walk on November thirtieth, and then we will be re-meeting again to rehear this on the seventeenth of December. If you want to come then, you can, but you will not be receiving anything else in the mail, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. Correct, it changed, because currently, currently, this lot has, with the exception of these replacements, has all this road frontage with this, this attached to the driveway. It's still, it's still, because they're right-of-way to the others, it does.
What do you mean by the other?
The other lots are, are- Yeah. And, but, no. The, the Griswolds and the other, other lots, I forget what's-
We're still here, we gotta prove minutes and-
Putting in these-
You can do that.
Changes the road frontage, because now this is cutting through.
Alana?
That road frontage, and it goes to the lots that are gonna be going in.
Would it be possible to confirm-
The frontage was there, but not, now that they're adding in-
In nineteen eighty-four?
Takes, that takes away from it.
Is that a big ask?
We'll have him go over-
Or a small ask.
There, so you can see more clearly what's going on.
They were always using them, and this was not two-hundred continuous speed. Anyway, sex. Oh, these, these are new ones?
No, these lots are gonna be the new lots.
How is there six hundred frontage over here?
Because of- Right-of-way.
Right-of-way is for what, those lots?
For those houses, yeah.
So, these had right, were on right-of-way, so they didn't hold the frontage.
Yes. All right, let me walk that with you, just a minute. All right, we still, excuse me, everyone, we still have a couple of items on our agenda. So, it'd be great if you could meet outside. All right, I know Romeo has stepped out for a minute. We have time now for public comment, and there's no public left, which is amazing.
They all commented. You gave them enough comment time.
Thank you.
If I was voting and asking for some fact-finding, I asked Alana if it would be possible, if it's not a big ask, to see if, what the frontage requirements were in nineteen eighty-four when this little fifty-foot wide easement was approved. So, for instance, if the two-hundred was in play, and the board approved it then, then that's one condition, or if the two-hundred was not there, and they approved fifty feet, that's another condition, so.
Okay, unfortunately, we can't
Yeah.
continue to discuss this case anymore, other than your question on the two-hundred, why, why we're asking it, but, um, so, we'll have to, when we're out on the site walk-
I won't be there. So, I'm just voicing it now, it's, it's up to you all, 'cause you guys are, but if some reason I do need to vote on the seventeenth, that would influence my vote.
Okay.
Okay?
And I, I can answer your question briefly on this, though, that he has six hundred feet of road frontage right now. It's only gonna be changed to fifty because of what's happening with the lot, the subdivision.
Because it's a new lot.
Correct. Okay. All right, so, other business, I don't think we have anything much here. I did want, yes, happy Thanksgiving. I do want to make you all aware that the planning board is currently looking at warrant articles. One of them is changing some definitions that we've had issues with, the two-hundred by two-hundred, and the, is being removed from lots, we're hoping, the definition for lots and that kind of thing, so keep, you can keep your eyes out for that. There's also some hopeful changes that would be in place for steep slopes. And I don't know that anything is gonna move forward on the detached ADUs, 'cause I, I think we're gonna run out of time, but that was the other, the other thing, but there aren't going to be some changes to that information on the lot envelope and what is considered a buildable and contiguous area. Did you need, was that a, do you have a question about any of that? Kevin?
I'm, I'm just-
Okay. All right, so, we, at our last meeting, went over some of those changes, and they've been sent to the lawyer to see what her intake, or her take on those is, and then we would be having a public hearing to discuss. So, I'll just keep you guys in the loop on that. Anybody have anything, any training they went to, or any seminars or anything? No? Alana, do you have anything, any updates for us at all? Do we have any-
Other than there's a new person taking the minutes, so you'll see her name on these next ones coming out.
Okay. Do we have any cases other than this one?
One.
So, December, we have two cases? Okay. All right, so, I will definitely, when I hear what's going on, y'all are aware that it's December seventeenth, please mark it on your calendars now that we have a meeting that night, and that we have two cases. And please, if you're not going to be here, let me know, because that's important to let the alternates know if they are needed. Approval of minutes, we have October fifteenth minutes here. And I, I've read them through, does anybody, did everybody else look at them, and do you have any? I don't have anything for a change at all. All right, then I would like a motion to approve.
A motion to approve the minutes of October fifteenth.
I'll second it.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes of October seventh, fifteenth, excuse me. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I wasn't here, so, I understand.
You are correct, so it's a four, zero, one. All right, thank you. And if there's nothing further, I will-
Make a motion, we adjourn?
Thank you, so, so we're adjourned.